So I'm going to start with news people may have already heard, but I want to, and we actually are fortunate to have Grant Principal Carol Campbell here in the audience. But the Grant High School Constitution Team just won the national We the People championship. Carol, will you just stand and let us recognize you? So tonight, the team will be coming home via Portland Airport. And we generally have large groups of people who go to greet them as they return from their championship. This is a big deal for the Generals, who won two years ago. And it's incredible for Portland Public Schools, this is our fourth consecutive year that Portland Public Schools has won the national championship. And it's our seventh national title overall. So congratulations to the Generals, and we look forward to welcoming the team and honoring them in person. We were also really fortunate to have had Nobel Laureate Rigoberta Menchou visit PPS on April 16th. She won a 1992 Nobel Peace Prize for her civil rights work on behalf of Indigenous Guatemalans. She's become an international symbol for social justice. And I'm just going to say, this was an amazing, amazing event. With support from the Guatemalan consulate in Portland, Dr. Menchou accepted our invitation to visit Portland Public Schools while in Oregon for the Peace Jam Conference. Ms. Dr. Menchou delights in the opportunity to meet with young people who she views as the catalyst for a more just world. She met with more than two dozen of our Guatemalan students from Roosevelt, Jefferson, and Pisa in a private reception at Jefferson before her speech. Then she delivered a powerful speech in the Jefferson Auditorium to more than 1,500 PPS students, families, and staff, as well as community members from Oregon and southwest Washington, followed by a small reception. She spoke in Spanish with simultaneous translation in English and American Sign Language. And you can see from some of the photos of her visit, it was a really moving, wonderful visit. And students got the chance to ask really personal questions that she responded to with really candidly and heartfelt. So we have a short video I wanted to share with you. And before it actually pops on, I just want to say thank you to the PPS staff who put this event together. It was a pretty, it was a large-scale organizational effort to provide a really intimate opportunity to meet with somebody who has just tremendous presence and impact in the world. So here is Rigoberta.
And if we want happiness to be in the world, we have to start by being happy ourselves.
If I'm happy, maybe I can inject a little bit of happiness in the rest of the people.
This was just an amazing opportunity for our kids to be able to hear somebody that has made such a huge difference, not only for the people of Guatemala, but as a symbol of the world, what one person can do to make this world a better place.
We're so happy to have you here.
Entonces, yo espero que ustedes sean unos grandes dirigentes. So I really look forward to you being great leaders.
Some things I could get into to help assist the country, or like ways I could go back and just do things personally inside the country to help.
She has made a change, not only Guatemala, but only Central America and in other countries, by having peace and giving hope to the people that there could be a change.
She's an amazing woman. She has an amazing amount of courage. I must say so myself, personally, like for that amount of activism, again, for like the right group of people in that country who were so under oppressed during the Civil War and everything.
It was a living history lesson, and students were able to ask questions, and she was just so inspirational. And just to be able to be close to her, there is an aura in terms of her personality, in terms of how she shows herself with a lot of humility.
From a woman's perspective, I know that women can do lots of things, and not only men can make a change.
Thank you. Four hundred times, thank you. It was really a wonderful experience, I'm just going to say. And you can tell, you could feel it just by that little clip. I'm going to just, one of my favorite questions that a student asked during the small conversation, and he was really moved listening to Rigoberta, and then he said, "How, as a young person, do I work for peace? Is it through my education? Do we become activists? Is it just what happens in our minds? Are we just finding peace in our minds?" Anyway, I was like, okay, I love this question. And she was so heartfelt in how she discussed this with students. So anyway, I just wanted to add that because it was one of the moments that really moved me. Okay, we have another wonderful opportunity, which is, this year, we had sort of our third annual Innovation Challenge in partnership with Portland State's School of Engineering. And it's a fabulous challenge to our high schools. So the theme of the competition this year was smart cities, making our urban communities safer, healthier, and happier. And part of what happens is the teams are challenged to identify a current problem and design a solution that will make Portland a safer, healthier, or happier place to live using science, technology, engineering, and math, or STEM learning. The projects this year were so impressive that we have one of the teams who is going to actually demonstrate their project for you. It was Grant High School's team, and they designed a bike parking finder app, which won in three categories: the best presentation, the best technology focus, and the audience favorite. The strongest concept category win went to Lincoln High School with the team's V-Lock, a more secure bike locking system to prevent theft. The best team venture award went to Metropolitan Learning Center for its gray water purification system. Madison High School won for the most impactful on society with a design for converting shipping containers into housing for the homeless. And Franklin, Jefferson, and Wilson also made great presentations. Grant's presentation was so well-received that I invited members of the team to come and give us a demonstration of their bike parking finder app. And here today, we have Corey Kohler, Alex Taylor, and Sarah Sinclair. And I'm going to invite you to come on up and tell us about your presentation and do a little demonstration for us. And I'd also like to, while they're getting settled, Jim Hook is here with us, and he's part of actually helping host this at PSU with the School of Engineering. So he was here for a previous presentation because he's also on the Board of Workforce Alliance, so thank you for sticking around for this.
So I just want to say thank you for inviting us. So PSU Innovation Challenge has been going for about three years now. And as Ms. Smith said, it's, the theme this year was smarter cities. And we decided that we were going to do a bike parking app, which led to more, like a prototype and a website. But yeah, so we decided to do that, and it basically just finds you a bike parking park spot. And we just wanted, since transportation has become more of an issue with also climate change, as well as...
Urbanization.
Urbanization.
Yeah.
So yeah, so we decided that this was a pretty big issue, and this was our way to solve it.
So, hey, I'm Alex, and I worked on the app, which is a mobile app for smartphones, but also a web app for, you can just visit in your browser. So I worked on that, and I worked on that along with Richard, who worked on our prototype here, which is the actual physical hardware piece. Fortunately, you can be here today, but we're going to give a quick demonstration because you guys want to do that.
Yeah, so Richard built something he likes to call the Logic Box, which is down here, I don't think the cameras could see it all that well, pretty much a black box with a Raspberry Pi computer in it, as well as some other objects of technological interest that I'm not familiar with. But it hooks up to a main server that works with the website and the app that transmits real-time data about whether or not a bike is parked in locations around the city. And it hooks up at each location through this prototype here. This would eventually be made of more resilient materials that's also waterproof. But if we set it down here, when a bike rolls up to it, it will push down on it, since it's a pressure sensor connecting the circuit, which if we switch to the computer screen, will show that the, in a covered parking space, a bike is currently parked in this location. And when the tire rolls away, it says there is no bike currently parked in this location. For, if we wanted to bring this to the whole city, there would only need to be one of these black boxes in each parking location with a pressure sensor in each separate slot. Yeah.
Yeah, which connects to the Logic Box.
Yeah, we are actually planning to continue this project into the summer with help from PSU students who just took a transportation class and created an entire database of their parking locations throughout the PSU campus. So we're hoping to make the website even bigger.
Yeah, I want to add that the components inside this Logic Box are relatively inexpensive. I think the Raspberry Pi is about $15, and the Arduino is like $10-ish. The only component we don't have is a cellular connection dongle. So unfortunately, we can't actually connect it to the internet right now. But other than that, it's working, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Awesome.
And then, so what we didn't get to show you is, once the bike is put on that spot, it sends some info to our server, which is then accessed by the app. And so people can see, oh, hey, there's a bike at this parking location. So yeah.
You guys, thank you so much. Thank you so much. And actually, I'd like to just recognize Eric Mason, who's their advisor at Grant High School. In the back, will you just wave for us? Yay! And again, Principal Carol Campbell. And was this the third year that Grant participated in the Innovation Challenge? To every year, and again next year, up next year? Yay! That's great. You guys, really great project. That was wonderful. Thank you for demonstrating. And actually, will you come on up, and I'm going to give you a little takeaway. And Jim, thank you for staying for that, and for being part of making that happen every year.
You know what, there's still a poster here, too, if they...
Oh, you guys, your poster is up in front, your big...
Your display board?
Your poster board? Yeah.
Pardon?
Yeah, for the other child.
There's one that was saved for somebody's...
There were four kids in the project.
Oh, get one more right there, but not the one with the purple on it. Thank you. Sorry, got it. Okay, and next, I have three outstanding students to tell you about tonight who are part of our tag program. On Friday, we learned that Sagan Gim, a Wilson High School sophomore, has won second place in a national essay contest sponsored by the American Society of Human Genetics, based in Maryland. She identified and then wrote about a phenomenon that expands on the traditional definition of a gene. She participates in OHSU's Partnership for Scientific Inquiry through Wilson High School, and she wrote the contest essay as part of her homework. KGW came out on Friday to report on her big award, $600 for her and $600 for her teacher to invest in genetics materials for the classroom. Congratulations to Sagan, her chemistry teacher, Mike DuChau Presley, and the student teacher, Richard Topping, her OHSU teachers, and Sagan's family. So this is pretty cool recognition. Another outstanding student is Clement Deng. And Clement, you want to just stand up while I'm talking about you? I know, this is kind of torture. Clement is a, Clement is a junior at Lincoln High School. His efforts to develop a faster and more accurate data mining method won him first place at the Intel State Science Fair in the Computer Science and Robotics category. In addition to winning the top prize in the Computer Science and Robotics category, he won four additional awards. Lewis &amp; Clark College Faculty Scholarship valued at $15,000, OSU Scholarship Award, the American Statistical Association Tom Owen Award for Excellence in Statistics, the Intel Excellence in Computer Science Award. Clement will compete at the Intel International Science and Engineering Fair in Pittsburgh in a few weeks. He will also present a paper on his data mining method to the International Electrical and Electronics Engineers International Symposium on Multiple-Valued Logic on May 19th at the University of Waterloo in Canada. His study of data mining could have wide-ranging impact on a number of fields, and I want to recognize him for his outstanding work. Clement. And now, finally, a fifth grader, Augustin Montez Tacuba, who has been chosen as the Oregon Association of Talented and Gifted Young Scholar for this school year. Augustin, come on up. So Augustin might have missed out on tag had it not been for his second-grade teacher who immediately recognized his gifts. Now he attends Access Academy, where he's known as a math standout and a leader who tutors other children in Spanish and English. Augustin receives a $500 scholarship to a summer enrichment program, which will allow him to attend camp for the first time. Augustin is here with his family, and will his family please stand and let us recognize them? And congratulations on this wonderful recognition from your school and from representing PPS beautifully. So wear your t-shirt, PPS Pride, and we're all proud of you. Okay, I also wanted to let you know about a group of Hossford students who are involved in the Hossford Engage and Active Teens, or HEAT, after-school program. Fifteen of these students, most of them tag students, traveled to New York for the International Model UN Conference. The students attended the opening ceremonies and got to sit in the seats of actual UN representatives. Before going to New York, they stopped in Washington DC and met with Senator Wyden and Congressman Earl Blumenauer. And we just wanted to let you know about this, because it was a very cool thing for these students. Jefferson High School Rose Festival Princess Cohija Burley takes down stereotypes as a varsity wrestler. She wrestles at 120 pounds, competes in volleyball and track, is the captain of the Jefferson Cheerleaders, and is active in student government and the Black Student Union. A junior in Jefferson's Health Science and Biotech Program, she plans to attend a four-year university and study marketing. She's among 15 outstanding young women from Portland metro area high schools who serve on the Rose Festival Court, promoting our city, getting mentored by top female executives, and earning a 3,500 college scholarship. She ended her first wrestling season this year with seven wins. Okay, I wanted to share a quick update on our third grade reading priority. In addition to the great work of our teachers in the classroom every day, our read-together partner organizations are busy helping us ensure that all students read by the third grade. Reading results and Smart Volunteers are tutoring struggling readers. The Timbers and Thorns are visiting our schools and reading to students in English and Spanish. We're all distributing books almost monthly to help build home libraries for all of our students. U as a board set aside funding for culturally-specific books, and we're in the process of getting that generous batch of books out to schools. And we have a video of a new pilot project. Last month, we distributed iPads to 80 families at Harrison Park, Lent, Markham, and Whitman. These iPads are loaded with literacy skill-building apps and will help us bridge the digital divide while helping parents work with their students. You can see the excitement around this project in the video.
I'm the Senior Project Manager in the Austin Teaching and Learning. We're here at Whitman Elementary today to distribute iPads to 20 kids.
Thank you.
Well, they spend time already on like phones or TV, and this one is going to be like something interesting for them.
It works just like, just like a library, just like a library book. Kids are checking out iPads, they're equipped with 4G internet access, and they're able to use a series of apps that we've installed at home.
For some kids that can't read as well as other kids, it gives them the confidence.
Because you play some math games, and there's some apps.
When you read, it's kind of like a new world in your mind.
So being able to point and click on things, and just pictures and objects, is a much more powerful way for a student to use a device. Families will get some brief training tonight, and then they're going to come back two more times this year for additional training and additional activities to help parents and kids work on student literacy together.
Okay, I'm just going to tell you, we have really cool stuff going on in our schools, which is why I'm telling you this much. And this time of year, a lot of students are completing projects or being recognized for things, so we have lots of good news, and we just wanted to tell this, tell it to you. So Abernathy's Garden was recognized yesterday by Congressman Earl Blumenauer at his Women's Leadership Luncheon. Abernathy's School Kitchen Garden Program provides kids with comprehensive food-based education, garden space, a working kitchen with a chef, and fresh produce eaten at meals, and a program that improves student learning and instills lifelong habits of health. This one, who was honored at the luncheon, were the group of mothers who were really the driver behind getting this started back in 2000. And now, 500 student lunches are supplemented by food from the garden, and it was an honor to be at the luncheon and have Abernathy recognized. There's great community energy around this garden as well. A lot of learning, good eating, lifelong habits, and community building. Beaumont eighth graders are tackling a college-level project with state-of-the-art technology and preserving a crucial part of our state and city's history in the process as they collect the oral histories of Vanport residents. Students created their own video documentaries with guidance from Concordia University graduate student Matthew Blanchard and US History and Language Arts teacher Kristin Parrott. Blanchard has combined students' photos and videos with GIS data and photos and created an augmented reality using an app called Junio. When anyone with the Junio app points a phone or tablet toward Vanport, old snapshots of the community will pop up, as will videos and information about the buildings and the residents. The project has been covered by the Oregonian and OPB, and students have been invited to speak at conferences, and more Vanport residents have stepped forward to tell their stories. So a really actually important part of documenting history in our community. It is really great, and it's very cool. Verslandia, one of my favorite events of the year, except this year it happened during a board meeting, so we were all here together rather than watching, so we brought you clips from Verslandia. So 20 students from 11 schools competed in the citywide high school poetry slam Verslandia, sponsored by Literary Arts. Cleveland's Gwen Frost took first place this year, wowing the crowd of hundreds at the Newmark Theater. Bella Trent of Madison, who was last year's winner, took second. Sukai Edwards of Jefferson placed third. Quentin Dixon of Roosevelt placed fourth, and tying for fifth were Wilson's Fiona Murphy and Roosevelt's Alexis Kennard. Congratulations to these brave and entertaining poets, and let's watch a clip of the poetry from the slam.
In rotation, or when prices are down at the gas station, heart rate up like inflation as I wait in anticipation, I'm only three struts away from my mini-vacation. And Clark Kent to Superman, give me a moment to jump into my disguise, hopefully I brought the right supplies. Pull my hair out my face, puff up my chest, and stretch my neck to the skies. I should forget I'm a Greek, this beautiful creature. I think to myself, that would be wise. Then it hits me like lightning, and after all the internal fighting, I man up and say, "Hey, how you doing?"
You'll watch the house implode on itself from a safe place, and then you'll keep running, even if you always did kind of love the smell of campfire. But if you're not smart, I don't know what to tell you. Maybe you like the way the flames lick a little too close to your skin. Maybe when the smoke is scratching at the inside of your lungs, you feel refreshed, because at least you and the smoke are both trapped, and misery always loves company, even if it is just for one night.
You see, but I, I'm taking a stand, standing up to these shadows, these silhouettes, this devilish other part of me that I can't escape from. I don't want this dark passenger anymore. I don't want to wear some facade every single day, all because I have to be just like him, or just like her, or just like everyone else.
I am a cultural connection to our past oppression. I am the future and the past. I object to the ideal that yin is bad and black is evil, because I mean, come on, people, let's look at history. I am black, like the ocean's greatest secret and the lion's greatest mane. I am black, I am black, I am black. So this, right here, is for everybody that loves to ask me, so what are you?
It was wonderful to see the Rosa Parks Bravo Youth Orchestra playing alongside the Oregon Symphony during a concert and gala on April 16th. Twenty-four of the school's third and fourth graders played La Bella Cubano with amazing professional musicians on the stage of the Arlene Schnitzer Concert Hall. We applaud the symphony for including our students. It was an amazing evening, and they did, each one of the students got to sit by their counterpart in the Oregon Symphony and play, and they were magnificent. They were magnificent. Another shout-out to Amanda Alonso, who's a history teacher at Madison High School. In December, she won the 2014-15 Civic Educator of the Year from the Classroom Law Project, and last week, she was recognized again at Classroom Law Project as the Legal Citizen of the Year. Here is a photo of her at the dinner. She works with Madison's Constitution Team and is doing a terrific job, so I just wanted to commend her again because she was again recognized this past week. So congratulations to Amanda. So Lila, a pop singer supervised by students, surprised students at Kelly School last week after learning of their anti-bullying video that they created with her permission to use her hit song. The students were unveiling their video in the school gym when the singer, who is a Grant High School graduate, made a special appearance. Here's a part of the video that the kids made to help stop bullying, and they made a real connection with Lila, who was gracious and kind with her little fans. Here's what the video is.
I'm really, really excited about the event that we have planned today. So please pay attention to the video.
Fun, art, arts.
Initially showcase a bullying awareness video.
Wow, did you see that? Look in the background, did you see those two kids? I think one of them is bullying the other.
We have a song at the end called Wake Up, that is by a Portland recording artist, Lila.
I think we did a video about bullying without even noticing it.
The school doesn't know in particular that she will be coming out from behind the curtains.
It's pretty amazing to have a star five feet away from you.
Yeah, it was sweet, it almost made me cry. Like I had to hold back the tears. I showed my mother last night, too, and she was like, "Hi, I'm going to cry." Because it was a compliment, but more so a compliment, just that children get the message.
It's not an everyday thing at our school to have a star on our stage.
When you see somebody picking on someone else, instead of just walking by and ignoring it, you do something about it.
Bullying itself is a big problem, but there will be people like me graduating going into middle school and high school, and things will get tough, and you need to know that you will prevail through whatever you have gone through.
They're the future, they're the youth, they're going to build our world in the future, and so to be able to reach them is really a, it's a big deal to me.
Give a hand to our filmmakers in Kelly. Couple more things. One, I just want to remind people to take our Portland Public Schools 2025 survey. This is a survey that's a chance for our entire community to help shame, shape the change as we grow in enrollment over the coming decade. It is on the website, www.oreganskitchentable.org. You can also download it at www.pps.net, or get it at any of our schools and turn it in at any PPS school office. So please take the survey. We're trying to get here from as many members of our community as we can. And then finally, an update on our band instruments. So this fall, PPS band teachers will finally get to put 750 new district-owned band instruments in the hands of budding musicians, thanks to the school board's decision to invest $925,000 toward rebuilding a program that has been eroded by years of budget cuts. The money is part of the investment the board set aside in February for strategic one-time investments after higher local option property tax collections. And we have long loaned instruments to students at little or no cost on the principle that money shouldn't block a student from experiencing creativity, collaboration, and perseverance taught through music education. So we're really excited about this, and there's great excitement in the students who are getting to use these instruments. And we have a short video on this one, too, and then we're, then it's a wrap.
This one still sounds fine. We would have to put these back on and get that glued to something.
Selwood Middle School student Henry Rice shows us his 40-year-old baritone horn.
And it's all dented up and stuff.
Eighth grader Nick Skalberg remembers struggling with his first trombone, and because of that experience, he had thoughts of giving up music.
I chose the trombone because I thought it would be fun to play, and then I got one, and I thought, I thought it was me and not the instrument.
Henry and Nick's wishes are now coming true, thanks to Superintendent Carol Smith's vision and the PPS Board, which has approved $925,000 to purchase new band instruments.
The economy is improving, and our local tax revenues were greater than we anticipated. After 12 years on the board, I cannot tell you how excited I am that we are going to be able to offer our students new musical instruments.
You know, it probably either dropped sideways.
Jenny Johnson has hundreds of instruments too damaged or simply worn out for future use. As the district's only repair technician, she says the last time the district bought new band instruments, Ronald Reagan was still president. On most days, Jenny is able to repair three to four instruments. She hopes to purchase up to 750 new clarinets, flutes, and saxophones, plus other instruments so desperately needed for band programs. She says quality instruments are not cheap.
Probably what we'll be purchasing the most of will be flutes and clarinets, probably about $450 to $600 if we're going to purchase a new Barry Sax. That's probably about five or six grand. A new set of timpani is probably more like 10 grand, so.
As these eighth graders at Selwood Middle School prepare for their next concert, nearly half are playing on instruments older than their parents. Some students in the district have had to share their flutes and horns, and although they don't mind, they are looking forward to becoming better musicians with the help of bright and shiny new instruments doing schools this fall.
Yeah, and I'm excited as a music teacher in Portland Public Schools and been doing this for a while, that, yeah, it's like the arts are coming back.